And we would really like you to just be active and contribute. So, welcome and enjoy today.
Thank you, Honorable Weba. I am going to outline our program. We are not going to have a long program. We have been told that we are competing with the soccer match. So, as if only you can see the band. I know even Paris fans, they have an interest in the match. Thank you very much. We are going to call Mr. Ramaru, the Chief Director, Climate Change. He is going to give us an overview. Firstly, I will start by introducing my... Let me apologize. I will introduce the team that I'm with. And then followed by Mr. Ramaru, who's going to do the overview on the climate change bill. After that, Honorable Paulson, next to me, he is going to do the papers of this public hearing. Followed by Honorable Mbata, who will give us the procedure to be followed on making oral submissions and written submissions. After that, we will hand over to the community or the members to do their inputs. Followed by Honorable Dave Bryant, who is going to do closing remarks. So, it is not going to be a long program, not unless you want us to be here up until 5 o'clock and miss the match. I am going to start on my left. Here it is, Honorable Dave Bryant. He is the member of this portfolio committee, Forest, Fisheries and Environment. Representing DA. Next to me, I have Honorable Mbata. Also a member of this portfolio committee. Representing ANC. On my right-hand side, I have Honorable Paulson. Also a member of this portfolio committee. Representing EFF. At the back, on my left-hand side, we have Honorable Damine. He is also a member of this portfolio committee. Representing African National Congress. At the back, also on my right, we have Honorable Mthunu. She is also a member of this portfolio committee. Our beautiful lady who was welcoming us. Honorable Weba. She is also a member of this portfolio committee. Representing ADA. We have the following apologies. From other members, it is Honorable Modise. He could not make it because he was laying his mother to rest yesterday. Honorable Singh from IFP. He had other commitments. Honorable Olo Misa from UDM. Now he had other commitments. Honorable Winkler from the Democratic Alliance. Also she had other commitments. We also have an apology from the MEC of Agriculture, Rural Development, Land Reform and Environmental Affairs. She was with us the past two days. Unfortunately, she could not make it for today's meeting. I have a team from Parliament. This side, we have our secretariat. On this side, we have our interpreters. We have our technicians on that side. I know that we also have those who are coming from the communications. And from the security services. So, the Parliament is up.
You can't leave it, you can't leave it.
As if you're uncomfortable, you can't leave it. I am now going to call Mr. Ramaru, the Chief Director, Climate Change, to just give us an overview on the climate change bill.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, Chair. Greetings to honorable members and greetings to all dignitaries. Safe to say, all protocol observed. And good morning to all participants. Just briefly, the climate change bill has been in the making for quite some time. Since 2018, and we have managed to run a number of provincial engagement. And now is, of course, in Parliament under the leadership of the portfolio committee to process it. The objective of the bill is in twofold. Which focuses on addressing both adaptation and mitigation. The adaptation side of things focuses on our capacity to respond to climate change impacts. Whereas the mitigation side focused largely on the reduction of the greenhouse gas emissions. The main objective is to ensure and provide good coordination across the spheres of government, civil society and business as key main stakeholders to respond to climate change. The other objective is to ensure that we can effectively respond to the climate change impacts. And the other objective focus on us being able as a country to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Chapter 2 of the bill focuses on the institutional mechanism which aim at strengthening the institutional capacity of us as a country to respond to climate change. This chapter will empower provincial forums to address the matters of climate change at a provincial level. It will also empower the municipal forums to also be able to respond and put in place strategies to address the issues of climate change. It also established the Presidential Climate Commission, which provide advice on a just transition. The bill will further empower the MEC at a provincial level to undertake the following. One, to ensure that they are able to undertake risk and vulnerability assessment that will help them to understand what are the risks of climate change in a province. Secondly, to develop climate change response plans and ensure that they are implemented within the province. Thirdly, to also ensure that there is reporting of programs and interventions within the province on the implementation of those strategies. The bill will also empower mayors at a district level or the municipal level to do the following. One, to also undertake the risk and vulnerability assessment to understand the risk associated with climate change at a district level. Two, to also undertake climate change response plans and strategies at a district and local level. Thirdly, to also be able to track progress and report on the implementation of the strategies and plan. The bill will also empower the minister to be able to develop climate change response plan and climate change adaptation strategy. And the climate change adaptation strategy would serve as a guidance for the entire country to respond to the impact of climate change. It will also facilitate collaboration across all key stakeholders, civil society, business and government at different layers to implement climate change responses. On the mitigation side. Which is the reduction of the greenhouse gas emissions. The bill will empower the minister to develop the sectoral emission targets for the various sectors. This will enable all these sectors to also contribute towards the reduction of emissions in the country. The bill will also empower the minister to allocate what we call the carbon budget, which is also a limit as to what extent the business can emit. Just to indicate currently the carbon budget are being implemented at a voluntary basis. So, this bill will ensure that those who are allocated the carbon budget have an obligation to implement plans to reduce the emissions. To ensure in full implementation of the bill, the following regulations will also be implemented. There will be a development of regulations that will promote effective monitoring and evaluation. Assessing progress on both mitigation and adaptation. There will also be regulations that will, of course, determine the review, compliance and enforcement of the carbon budget. Thank you very much, Chair. In a nutshell, that's just an overview of the bill. I think it will be important to really enable all of us to address the issues of climate change in the country.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramaru. For this overview. It is very clear now what is it all about this climate change bill. I am going to hand over to my colleague, Honorable Paulson, to give us the papers of this public hearing.
Greetings to everybody, I thank you.
We are inviting your input as we are in the process of drafting the bill to suit the needs of our communities. Parliament, as a lawmaker, is obliged to consult and seek your views on it. Public involvement. The public participation process in all provinces will be guided by Parliament's public participation model. The following values underpin public participation. In terms of Section 12 of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa, 1996. South Africa is one sovereign. Democratic state founded on the following values. Human dignity. The achievement of equality. And the advancement of human rights and freedoms. Non-racialism and non-sexism. Supremacy of the constitution and the rule of law. And universal adult suffrage. A national common voters' role. Regular elections and a multi-party system. Of democratic government. To ensure accountability. responsiveness. And openness. The principles of public involvement are. It promotes active and representative participation. Towards enabling all community members. To influence. The decisions that affect their lives. Engage community members. In learning and understanding community issues. And the economic. Social. Environmental. Political. Psychological. And other causes of action. It incorporates the diverse interests. And the cultures of the community. In the development process. And disengages from the support of any effort. That is likely to adversely. Affect the disadvantaged members of the community. It actively enhances. The leadership capacity. Of community members. Leaders and groups within the community. And utilizes. A community's diversity. To deepen shared understanding. And produces outcomes. Of long-term benefit. To the whole community. All society.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Paulson. For giving us these papers of this public meeting. Indeed, your inputs will be very important. That is why we request that everyone to participate. Whether by oral submission or written submission. I am going to hand over to my colleague, Honorable Mbata. She is going to give us the procedure following the oral submission and written submission.
Sanbonan. I greet you all. My name is Honorable Simpiwemba. Mine is just to explain what is going to happen from here going forward. We're going to look at the procedure of how to submit a written submission or an oral submission. We ask all the stakeholders that if you've got something to say on opinion or view, can you please just raise your hand? You should also know as the public, we humbly request that you only take five minutes. And when you do come to the fore, we request that you give us your name, your last name and where you come from. I would request the public that if it does so happen that what you want to present here orally exceeds the amount of time that you have been allocated, can you please make a written submission and finish off and complete whatever it is you need to say? We have our parliamentary staff here by the name of Sis Chineka. She will give you a form or a paper wherein you can fill in the rest of your submission. It's not only the people that will have been allocated time to speak that can fill in these forms. It's everybody else who feels like they want to make a submission on this bill on climate change that can fill out the form and submit it. We're going to request ten people on the request of the acting chairperson to come to the fore and give your submissions, your oral submissions. And then after that, when we're done with the first ten people, we're going to request the next ten people to follow. Just to reiterate, please do not forget when you come to the fore to tell us your name and where you come from and whether or not you support the bill. Even when you're making a written submission, please do not forget to state whether or not you support the bill. So if you are not able to make your written submission and submit it today, you're still welcome to continue to draft a submission and make sure that it reaches parliament before May because that will be the cut of date wherein which we can no longer accept any more written submissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you Honorable Mbata. In addition to what you are saying, everyone is allowed to express him or herself with suitable or comfortable language. We also request that if you are representing an organization or NGO whatsoever you indicate. I am now going to ask you to raise your hands those who want to do oral submissions. Oh, let me start on my left.
I will ask you people from Bombella to please raise your hands.
There's a lady with a white t-shirt striped, she raised her hand but it was clear, I don't know, with a striped shirt. Maybe she was looking for a form. Everyone is welcomed. Let me move from my left and check on my right. Can I see if there's any people, okay. There are those who are raising their hands to come and occupy their middle seats. Oh, you can come, you can come, and these two in front. Is that, oh, now I'm putting a semva, is that put on with a panama?
We will allow the second round, let us start with this one.
And go sit down.
We greet you. My name is Fritz Harold. I'm from the Nkoma's municipality. Here in the Mpumalanga province.
With your respect, the technical team is requesting that you switch off your data, all of us, because it is interrupting with the live streaming. Remember this meeting, it is live on all social media platforms, the parliamentary ones, your Facebook, your Twitter, and also it is live on 408, if I'm not mistaken, on the STV channel, so we are requesting that you just switch off your data.
Good department, Level 12, Community Services. Part of my responsibilities, when I show, communities are maintained at all times and also to make sure parks are maintained at all times and when I show, cleaning projects are implemented.
I'm from the Bombella municipality and I'm in Gomazi, sorry, Nkoma's municipality and I'm in charge of, I'm responsible for making sure that parks are being taken care of and cemeteries are being taken care of.
It's the chairman's name, the same name, it's also a chairman, same name. Don't worry about my colors, purely South African.
I'm confident that everything in the bill is going to assist us to fight climate change.
Yeah, I'm representing two caps lah, I'm also the secretary, where the secretaries in Koma's Greening and Beautification Forum.
I'm wearing two caps here today, I'm also a representative of Nkoma'si.
Nkoma's Greening and Beautification Forum, I think you're around the country.
I do want to state it categorically that I support the bill. The reason why I support it is because it's the one that's going to help us against climate change and global warming. I have a question on section two of the bill. It says that municipalities should have climate change strategies. I wanted to find out from the portfolio committee sent from the National Parliament. We're difficult for that because out of the 225 municipalities around the country, maybe by ten, there were a department climate change, my issues, my issues environment. The reason being, we don't have that much capacity as a municipality that looks at the repercussions of climate change.
That is why, Nancy, we managed to establish the forum because.
That's why, that's why in my, my field, in my area where I am, we have tried to do this because the municipality does not have the capacity to look into the issues of climate change and that's why we've taken it upon ourselves to do so. I don't think I'll be fired for pointing that out, that we don't have such a department, municipality doesn't have such capacity. I don't think I'll be fired for pointing that out, that we don't have such a department, municipality doesn't have such capacity. It's not only our municipality here in Gomazi, there's many other metros that have this problem. Also, I wanted to, I have a question on page fifteen with regard to the carbon budget. We want to know that will it trickle down, will it finally get to the municipal level? Because I see it's talking about the provincial level and it's also mentioned the districts, but it says nothing about the municipalities. In closing. In closing, I just wanted to find out this budget that they've allocated, will it get to the non-governmental organizations that are being established in the communities? So that the community can assist government in fighting against the repercussions of climate change.
We are looking forward on that, Mr. Fritz, thank you very much.
Sanbonani.
Greetings. I'm Pindile Makusho.
So I won't be long, I only have four questions. Yes, the first one. Can the commission ensure that there will be enough permanent jobs than temporarily jobs in the renewable sector? And then the second one, will the renewable sector be able to balance the jobs that will be lost by the commission of coal plants? And then the third one, when renewables start developing, will the previous coal workers be the first option and will training be offered to the new workers? And then the last one, how is the bill going to help us in the electricity issue?
Thank you.
Before you Mama, let me welcome you, Hosi. Just informed that there's a Hosi in this meeting who has just joined us. Hosi Nicholas Ngolise, Nkomanie of Siboshwa Traditional Council and a member of Elanze, the local house. You can continue, sis. You can continue, sis.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wusifagute. I'm based here in Bombella. I'm a public servant, I work for the Department of Water and Sanitation. But today I'm standing here for my political organization, DA. I've read the bill. And I support it. But there are certain things that I am a little bit concerned about them, which I need to learn. I had a previous speaker speaking about monitoring and evaluation of some certain processes throughout the bill. I believe the bill is a guideline framework that the government is using in terms of how the bill, it will be used in terms of the climate change. And I believe that there will be offenders in terms of how the bill will be implemented in terms of climate change. Then, what is the procedure that will be used for the non-compliance? And then my request is that the bill should explain clearly on how those offenders will be prosecuted. Also, how will the bill enforce that penalties that are going to be put in place? That if you have broken the law, this is what's going to happen. In terms of transparency and achievement, I believe the commission also needs to be transparent on how are they going to implement their activities. How will the commission be measured on their performance? And how will the commission be held accountable? Thank you.
Thank you, Sis Wus.
Greetings. From Bombella in a place called Msholuzi. The something that I don't understand, fill me in, please. Page sixteen. On page sixteen? It's a face-down and face-out scientific greenhouse gas emission and declaration. The same countries who are funding our green gases are also the same countries who are using our coal. And then the security on our electricity is where it will be. And then he, he security on our electricity is why he go pilap.
Lapa ge, le tingamani, le tinyendi, le ti sebendisa, la, le, le tinsitate,
Eh, nsa nganalo u kume ka kumwankwa la Kruger National Park eka ti kilometer leti nganaku fifty.
Not fifty, few.
Few, oh, ti tsongu nyan.
And this initiative was in response of the dire need for the masses of that area, communities that are in the close proximity of the Kruger National Park.
Eh, shikombele shiti i kokwala oka si lave kole sngabako iban ulava watsama ku ekusui nala shiaru shitsama kuko.
Coming to the bill itself, I'm very much excited about this bill.
Logu ita eka na ombisi u nitaksangofu.
Eh, but eh, what I think need to be looked at with a critical eye.
Lesi itzakela kukosishopa shop sisasunene.
I have realized that our people are ignorant.
Ibo nele sakuwa nubaka ina avalanzele riz.
And ignorance comes in twofold.
Eh, kukain galanzele riz si si itindlela timbir.
There are those who say we don't know.
Kuna lavange ah ayitimichu.
There are those who say we don't care.
Kuna lavange ah isaboba lavane mbaga naso.
So we can put them in, we can paint them with one, with one brush.
Avaba lavane ngabave eka eka ndawi yingwe mkuwa.
Eh, so what is needed is education.
Lesi si laveka ku i jonszo.
Next is even awareness.
Kutankulanzelela ekukulavre sana eka wakatiiko.
To highlight and elucidate the importance of living in a sustainable environment.
Ikonbi sana etindlela takua anya eka ndauleyi itzamiseke.
And to make them understand the significance or the consequences of living in an environment which is not healthy for them.
Kutanki i konbi sana imbu ye le kumbeyi ubi zakyutsama eka mbangu no unga kalakunga basanga.
Because the environment itself is also affected.
Yukuba mbangu na u woshe watzikilele.
On the basis that the environment's ecological life system is grossly compromised.
Yukuba eh, si lolesia anya kukwala hakanbangu sadzikilele.
So education is very important.
Kutanki ekujonsi sana kumbeyi jonszo iyan koka.
Last but not least.
Shoyetelelo.
Compliance and enforcement.
Kulanzelela nakoba ilanzele riwa.
I think that is very critical.
Sheso itsemba le sakuwa isankoka mgo.
I thank you, program director.
Yamkensamufamisontiero.
Siabulela tu Kezani.
Johnny. Kolisi ngosi from Msholosi.
This is Kolisi ngosi.
Hmm, I just, I just want to know, how are we going to send a strong message to go back to Bangea Cola about this climate change?
Eh, may I ask, how are you going to send the message, this critical message, to the people who are not here?
Yeah, so that you know, kumuntu yaxabu gufa, skela kutle strong message, nasiya to go back to nengasabu kufagu gufa, so that they take it serious.
We are all scared of death. Please do eh, put the phrase about death on that strong message.
Yeah, I, ya tusmanje, kunema electric cars angit, and our ozone layer is affected by the climate change angit. So lama electric cars have to be introduced so that we eliminate lama carbon show. Please, 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 please.
Eh, ngan, ngan kela kakulu, please introduce the electric cars so that we stop the emissions.
More trees have to be planted. I thank you.
Tithlala tithlanyenye loe ngabonga.
Nguasiputimkolisi. We have agreed that, eh, let me respond to the question eh, that how are we going to relate this message to those who are not here? We have agreed that we are going to work together with the Office of the MEC, also the eh, the Speaker's Office, because it is the Speaker's Office that is responsible for public participation. So this process is not going to end just here. We will make sure that the municipalities, through the Office of the Speaker, they educate our people.
Lenkubo ayina opelela konala si taithuba ihamba ye ema hofisi abo maspala si yinzaba yabo meya naboso mlomo le le kufunega babuka nenay isachendwa gulel Office labolo somlomo lenza itao hamba ifige ebantuin ayipelel konala.
So before we naputu, I am informed that there's Uxosi KN Mkhachwa of Mauewe Traditional House.
Sen, sena ti sewa kuti knebkozi eh, Mkhachwa lobubuya eh, bukosin mbaga Mauewe.
I am told that she is the leader of the delegation to the National House of Traditional Leaders. Can he or she raise a hand?
Ah, gasugumenoma paga misisadla simboni kutuwa nguye lohola leli cimba leli hamba nala baba velonke, labamelebu inrebkos. Suguma sibonima.
Siabulela ma'am. Aye, aye, asukwazum sugumisa ma'am. Uh-uh. Man koliso uyasmocha o ma'am. Asukwazukupaga miso uzazo, uzazo utete akunye no dat siya kolisa.
She is coming to speak. She needs to stand up.
Na yu impuzi fo i penalit. Eka puti, kupeka ba.
Okay. Eh, greetings to the members of the parliament, eh, greetings to the eh, councillors, greetings to the traditional leaders, greetings to the journalists, greetings to the technicians, eh, greetings to everyone in the house.
Ni ya bingelela litrembelebiye parliamente trembolele kosi litremboleleba technician lapha. Na u wongu mundlo konala pendlini ngan bingele.
As I introduce myself, my name is Raitin Gomes Zulu.
Nginu Raitin Gomes Zulu mine.
I am from Durslop Bushpak Ridge, Wat Eight.
Ni buye Wat Eight Durslop eh, Bushpak Ridge?
The same word as Kezani.
Eh, Wat inle lapakbia Kezani konala.
Eh, I support, or we support the eh, climate eh, change eh, program that you guys are giving to us.
Siya usegela lom, sebele gela lomhlelo, noa lomse twasivivinyo we te kunjinjandinja kwe simosalitulule nte ngau namhla.
Eh, as a resident of Bushpak Ridge, eh, Bushpak Ridge is a beautiful place with a lot of trees that we are blessed about.
Njenobangxala eh, Bushpak Ridge, Bushpak Ridge inzabak, inzaulenle kakun, leni tithlala yinhlhe kakul kutisngalala wu.
In a, in a parliament eh, as we eh, live in Bushpak Ridge, we would like to eh, send eh, a proposal if that is the case to assist in terms of the environment that is around Bushpak Ridge in terms of cleanness.
As, as resident of Bushpak Ridge, eh, I'm coming with a proposal about how you can help, parliament can help us eh, in maintaining our environment.
Yes, as a detonist, we believe that eh, at the end of the time, it affects our climate change.
Njenkohamba kwe skatise abona kutigunkola, ngieko lukuleta lukutigubene kukutuka kwe simosalitulule.
Yes, eh, and it all caused because eh, we don't have much dumping areas where detonists can able to be located in one area.
Si tege tinzau lapos lalakona yonge le mfu mfu le konai etodi besese kubane kungola.
If we can have dumping areas that can able to assist in cleanness and also create jobs for our people who are picking up cans around.
Nasingabane lhllelo, le kutisbenna to tinzau tegilalala yonge le mfu mfu le konale pumala sithlala konala. Kwakege nematuwa emsebeindi ebantu njenala balaba hamba babu tzatikotele lapasalakona.
In a proposal, we'll ask or check if your parliamentary budget include those kind of things in terms of assistance.
Gule sethu lolesna so siyabuta ke kuti lapha gulel pagelo laseparamente li iba kongaba konai ini infolenga slegelela konala.
And as I come to my conclusion, we like to appreciate from the environmental department for giving the whole community the stuffs as part of eh, environmental eh, assistance.
Si kela kukonga kefuti guleliti go le simonzau ngeguti basni geton kele tindhola basni getona gule gelela ekutretse ni lukutuka kuteka kwe simosalitulule.
Thank you.
Eh, siabulela, Mr. Raitin. We are done with the people that we have identified. I am going to request eh, Uxosi, Omkhachwa, no Uxosi, Omkolisi Ngomane. I'm not sure who's going to speak between the two, but if they both feel like speaking, we do not have a problem with that.
Si abo nga genkabaya ngos ngabali le Mkhachwa. Siabo nga ngomano, stya ukela ke basabkosini no ma bkosibetu tine. Si baganguane kutsebuti ngapambili bufige buspefumlele.
Eh, ngaya vosela ginongelela lapentlini.
I greet you all as we are in this house today.
Eh, voseli ma members eh, portfolio.
I would like to greet the members of the portfolio committee.
Yeah, forestry, fisheries, eh, environment.
And the Department of Foresters, Fisheries, and the Environment.
Eh, bingelele basalbasenhlazenye as a whole.
I want to greet the inhabitants of Lanzeni as a whole.
In my heart, entitweni kela bingelela basalbasengomazi.
I would also, in my heart, like to greet the inhabitants of Ngomazi.
Eh, ne kunenda ngchabula kuti we are represented.
Siya chabula kakulu kuti isinati simelelo elanana mula.
Ngube proud, proud kakulu, ngboni banwaga Sboshwa napabasa ba chabula ba kulu melama waboni ngosi.
I, I was very happy to see the people from Sboshwa come up and participate. That saddened my heart.
Eh, ngchabula kakulu eh, manivu kuti ngobangi manfigala, kuti ngutama kosi basingosi ngimele maju basekufuna kulu ma kosi eh, le vahambi samine pambi le sena chabula manbona lamkhachwa langasi yo, I at least sing safe maju.
I was very glad when they acknowledged us as the House of Traditional Leaders. I was not very clear who was going to speak between me and eh, somebody else, but when I looked around, I did see Ngabaya Ngosi, and I'm very glad that she's here, but I was given the mandate to come and speak today.
Eh, ngay kulis ngay kunle, ngobanga senkuluwa kumbeyi ndende, ndefunisha yine inzakaka. Eh, ngay interpretale. Eh. No, ngan chabulis aloko, for me eh, it comes like in a short notice because even the bill, this one, I didn't even read it then. Our talk lies, because what is wrong, what is right, what you have to fix, but ndokulu maju, I think logunoma le sekubona kutinila.
I want to thank the parliamentary committee and this initiative by government for sending you to come to us, to come forward, and to take our views on the matter. Personally, I haven't gone through the bill, so I wouldn't be able to say whether or not it's good or bad, or whether or not I support it. I will just talk, I will speak in general terms and just explain what we as the people are facing as a problem here.
Eh, yeah, ngan lala ngobanga, in ganslebe lenkukulu makfano kuti ma mm, fano si vote of thanks although ngo sing it's itao kulumetrinene, but eh, logo konakos already.
It will sound like I'm concluding, but I do, it's very heavy in my heart to extend this vote of thanks to you as the government.
Hmm, okay, logu ya ngan ngan zenkhas kuti yini eh, because usually, masbaisatka lendo lebe bangaybiti, bebaybita, bebangaybiti ni climate change. Most of the time, bewabe ita kuti is global warming and then, but mangisbingsi ngayboga, it's not exactly global warming, it's like ujinja, like it's climate change. Mapegubanza, gubanza kakul, mapexisa, xisa kakul, mainfula bekonahiiko, and I cannot explain logo ngobaniya niya kuati logo, but inzawale konala kuti siglungsanja ni logo.
I'm a little bit confused with regard to the terminology because previously I was used to using the term global warming, but I see that as you came here today, we're speaking about climate change, I do realize that it's, it's somewhere eh, interlinked, but at the moment, I just wanted to say what we as people are seeing as a problem here.
Eh, ngabangutu logu ya gu solve a le problem le ya le climate change, global warming, some, somehow, siyabona ku yandeka ematropin, but I think the government kufuna izame ku vyeela omhlaba ema kosi and okdokaza kutuwa yengsonzalo.
I just wanted to humbly request that I see this issue of global warming, especially climate change. It affects us especially in the metropolitan areas, in the cosmopolitan areas, in the towns. We see the extreme weather changes, but I just wanted to be specific today and ask that this situation must also put into consideration the land that, that must be allocated by the House of eh, Traditional Leaders.
Yes. Don, eh, ngabangsisi ninda i protection from gi ni because eh, gunenzaba ye deforestification.
We request that you protect us as the House of Traditional Leaders because there's the issue of deforestation.
Yes, koba, mangsa kula mine besina logo kuti mundu ebkosin mundu onamthola anetinku le titzamba ago, uyabanjwa.
When I was, when I was growing up, it was a situation that when you are found with
tinguni, tinguni.
wet wood, yes, you would be in trouble.
You would be in trouble nga ni, because bukosibe buzama kuprotector eni lomhlaba nali, nali mvelo le bekonala.
Because as the House of Traditional Leaders, we were trying to protect the forestry and also our agriculture and everything that grows in general.
Eh, lavalimago eh, asisi mklambi valimema orange obalima mangoza ifunagili lagu linua konakba ni ma gumtrees, emeso.
If you will notice that those ones that have orchards for mangoes and also for oranges, there is a situation where you will find gum trees on either sides of this orchard.
And logo ku hipesik, because logo ku vyeela eni ku vyeela go na lukulhla go ngali mvelo lele tithlala, ma kunegomoya uyahambi salama bloomla o, asisasa xikasas.
This is a protective measure. It protects the agricultural growth so that it doesn't get swept away.
Eh, ya eh, ngabonga, akusin nganga kuluguningona, pati ngan zenku kulumegonke, pati kunaluku nyelikta wpu ma ngani eh, pati kufunasikulu.
I have a lot to say, but I will try and be brief. There's a lot that I would like to say.
And logo axi platform ya konala, logo bekufunega i DMR, pati ndakulu ma, noxalapas.
I would like to say something, even though this is directed at this DMR, but I feel that it should be said in this platform also.
Eh, inzaba ye pollution vela i apila.
The, the issue of pollution is a serious one.
Eh, some, somehow eh, eh, lendo le gimi ngifila ngasi fana ne covid, i ma lama western countries ayay create.
I feel that the situation is like covid. The western countries created it.
And senya politika nyalo pati, senya noxalapas. But I create this thing eh. How come, kunis kulumela, how come kutiwa malale enda i, i pollution? Hamba uyeli bombo maju, ekiti, kutuwa limatrakso. A transporter lela lele, lama mineralis etu sewa hambisa tine.
Why do we say that burning coal is an issue of climate change, but then we are exporting the coal?
Pati kezitine kufunasitata somewhere kumbemoyini, but bonalela lele, balutata bo 1970s.
They say we should use renewable sources of ele, of electricity, but they are taking our coal.
And xasasotenga lele product, elale sopinze siltenga le, lisuwala, ngabonga.
And then tomorrow, we have to buy, we have to import the coal, our own coal. Thank you.
Siabonga kosi eh.
We thank you, House of Traditional Leaders.
I, inyaniyo, na ayio politiki, inyani le, ayitayio.
This is the truth.
Eh, ngaya vosela eh, ku leadership.
I greet all the leadership.
Ngusale onge ema various committees leka konala. Ngibingelele nema committee, ngewa shuka shuka wa olakona la nana mula. Baga communications. Skela kusela baka communications. Eh, laba balulege kakulu, le kunema lunga esive leka konala ngaparatswe tu, ngibo ebantu vulestomele labona senema kosi.
The most important people are the people that are here today, the community, and they are the ones that we represent as the House of Traditional Leaders.
Ngubingelele eh, tukemlingano ami bkosbamba gango mane.
I would also like to greet my colleagues, my equals, the House of Leadership, the Traditional House of Leadership from the Ngomane tribe.
The Department eh, ye bukosle konala, traditional leaders, mpu malanga siskete ngambona.
I would also like to greet a member of the House of Traditional Leadership, Siskete, I can see you here.
Kubalulege le kutu baba konala say they, they can take note.
It's very important for the, for all these people that have enumerated to be here so that they can take note.
Imvamisa bukosibieptatelege panska kulu.
Most of the time, we disregard this House of Traditional Leadership.
I example, i konakonala siya ibona.
Their example is here in the house today.
Traditional leaders are not part of any committee, gulenza bale ye climate change.
Traditional leaders are not part of any committee here represented today with regard to climate change.
Kungaba i committee climate change yaga maspala.
It could be a committee from the municipality.
Kungaba eh, ku provincial.
It could be at the provincial level.
Kube ku national.
Or at the national level.
And the presidential committee.
Even the presidential committee.
Angati ge ngoba ema kosi, niwo ema administrators agutzala alomhlaba usengaga figina kongolos.
I'm not clear how this happened because we have been here as the House of Traditional Leaders way before the ANC was even established.
Ngla besi ilaleka konaga kulu.
That's where we drop the ball.
Gatzesi unagele umhlaba, as I've said, that we were the administrators of this land before this government. Gatzesu unageela umhlaba, njenobangi shokwakangi tiba pati ngapamku kutsefugale wulmendelu sakona nyan. Besi imalile ingosi yaga mshiga inzala lesasebenda ngayo eh, kunagele eh, livelitfu. Kwakunegogo ngelo glese wenda ga maju, njenoba sekpetse nene, ne inshogo yalomhlaba.
As the House of Traditional Leaders, I also want to acknowledge Ingosimshila, and I want to say that we as the House of Traditional Leaders, we were taking care of the issues of climate change way before this government came into place, and we were taking good care. We didn't have the issues that we are facing today.
I cannot elaborate ge kwe kuti yini nanile besi wenda, gepage kusobala giatiwa.
I won't elaborate on what exactly we did. I won't go into detail, but everybody knows.
Benangosa kakulu kwe kuti ge i department eh, le relevant, nalogle skulmanga kwe climate change. Isale pansi ifage ema kosi, kuma committee onge, uguze suwati khalinzima on the ground, laguna labo banwbetu konala, lagunetsi laspete loomhlaba.
I would like to request the relevant departments, that is the Department of EEF, to take into consideration putting into place members of the House of the Traditional Leadership in the different committees so that we can play a role, a very important role in getting closer to the community and dealing with these issues because they are the people that we represent.
Kukonage ema sigo le siyewatrine, lasikonakona eh, ema llati lega ngonawona le satigo ko kuti kunele sigo le litrinua kola, la le kufanele kuti tine silitrine, siyaguate kongelo go gatzesigunagele, gepage uma anegu ema kosi lapo lusitoluenu ngegelu vagale gale, ne kunetsi sana eka nyene relevant department guiobanxalu nsalu, anegu nuwateksebenda gale, umaniyonge na esiveni ngapandle wetu.
We have customs and traditions as the people of Mpumalanga which must be followed, and we do follow them as a part of their culture. Now, if you exclude us, even at the provincial level and even at the national level, you won't be able to get to the grassroots people because of the customs and the traditions that we have to follow, that we are aware of and that people understand that we are the custodians of.
Siyangosa ge kuti sebe inanyenye yale, yale elbanxalenu. Uguze suwati kuba on the ground, suwati kunbitele bandvu nibene ma awareness campaigns, ne wati kfiga konala on the ground because njenoba ne abona bandvu, they are not enough. Bangane kakulu le basale ekaya and they need to be educated.
We request.
Nalokwal segile.
We humbly request that you do include us in every program that the government does with regard to this issue so that we can be able to get to the grassroots people because as we can see today, there's not enough people in the hall. These people are not aware of what's really going on and it affects their lives, so we would like to be included so that we can educate our community and so that they can know what they are facing and how to deal with it.
Kuna sigo logo, ema kosi ato lala inzima lenkulu kukulumisa nanala bo lebendalu kutaupepetele gisa eh, i climate kwe kuti ingabi esmen le sile.
We can also caution or reprimand those people that are doing things that should not be done in order to combat the climate change issue. We are the very people as custodians of our customs. We are the very people that can be able to reprimand those people.
We are willing to assist as House of Traditional Leaders. Siyafuna ke kubanelka lelo, siyafuna kchikjele sivivaleni si bukos. But let us do it in a right way. Kotva asukwente ngan tlala lenyo. Kunema departments la relevant, exite le department like eh, MTPA.
There's departments that are relevant that can assist in this situation, the Department of MTPA.
Sinetikwi etindza wenitema kosi sinetindza o futi lesingatenda tikwiwa, umati valelegile ayatea protekta leto tishala le titzengega go, uguze suwati pilaga ngon.
We have eh, enclosures in the traditional land. We have enclosures, and those enclosures ensure that species that should be protected are protected, and we are the very people that can make sure that that happens.
We therefore ask you to speak to the relevant departments. Ukutu bashthasa ngaleto timalu, uguze suwati kunagele logo lenzingani ne kuti ningezwe ngago ngobumasonga loomhlaba songa leto tithlala kubalulege le kakulu kwe kuti nisite nani, ngegusle tela tinsita, te kuti suwati kuban, kungeta kwe mesebendi leba yonagele lelo llati.
We also request that the government can include us in the budget so that we can be able to sort out this problem and so we can be able also to create jobs for our people.
Ema kosi ge ayakela ayangosa kwe kuti nikulumsa nena ma departments la relevant to have i budget ema kosi on their own so that they will be able to manage umanikamuka nema IDAs ni department yaga forest. Uguze kuti i budget yen, i wati ngatzisana ne budget yen ri ema kosi. Siyakela ke kuhulmende wetu wavelonke kuti kupenilpa kelo lele nigelewa bkos, uguze bkosibwati nabu kuluisana nanale saea lesespekenene na u lena ye mimoya, le mibi, le skungatile le banakshisa. Ni gusho logo ngoba sine banwana leba funsi leba lala ema kaya abanau emisebende kotuwa le department ngavula logo mi tegnake ema llati, sisesena wo.
Also where I come from, Mauewe, we do have a mine, but it operates like a small business.
I think I was four years old or so. But nothing. In nineteen eighty-five. It electo Ngoli Sanje, we don't have.